There we go. Echo, okay. Good. We are at the City Council Chambers, City Hall, 10 West State Street. Today's date is January 11, 2021. The time is 5:30 PM. And we're here for a regular meeting of the City Council. The first thing we do is read this notice to the public that the mayor and council will welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the items that are on the agenda. Step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes so I just may speak. Speak clearly, direct your remarks to the mayor and city council, and not to any city council specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, let's, those who are here, unable, rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and with the support of liberty and for our offices.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Gowdy. Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Starks.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Very good. Thank you. Does any, do any of the councilors wish to make any comments? Madam City Administrator, you?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Well, then, it's my pleasure to, uh, uh, call out somebody who's been a great volunteer around town. Um, it was obituary was in the newspaper yesterday. Just a lovely man who did all sorts of things. So, could you do the honor for us?
Yes. Sarah Rosenbloom, Library Director. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. Um, yes, for those of you old enough to remember the Iowa trust scandal, which engulfed Marshalltown in 1992, the city was struck hard by this financial crisis and the library took a big hit. We lost half our staff and our Sunday hours due to severe budget reductions, but community step, members stepped up in a big way to help the library. One of these volunteers was Lee Britnall, who responded to the call for library volunteers in 1992. We lost Lee last week. He passed away at the age of 92. He was a devoted library volunteer for over 25 years. He came in two days a week to volunteer, and after his shift, he would read the Chicago Tribune. Sometimes he would spend a couple of extra hours at the library if his wife, Valois, was hosting a women's group at their home, and then he would go home after the meeting and eat all the leftovers, or that's what he told us. Lee and Valois traveled all over the world on cruise ships. He told us that he hung out in the libraries on the ships so he could read the newspapers from different regions. Lee was also active in the community, serving on numerous boards, including Junior Achievement, Rotary, MCC Foundation, the Water Works, Chamber of Commerce. He was just a lovely man, you know, in the, the, almost seven years that he was there while I was there, he was just a lovely, lovely man. Um, and on behalf of the library, staff, and library users, we want to send us our deepest condolences to Lee's family, Valois. We always will cherish our memory of him and the great work he did for the Marshalltown Public Library and the Marshalltown Community. Lee was just one of several volunteers. Uh, I talked about Mary Lois Merriman several years ago. I believe the mayor will remember. Uh, we still have a couple left who came in on that first group. Some of these folks have been close to 30 years here, working for the library and for our community. Um, you know, just, just a lovely man. Thank you for giving me the time to honor him.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Uh, I had the pleasure of serving on a trustee board with him at the church, and I know that he got the highest award that Rotary gives out for service above self. Uh, so those are just two of the things that we got to intersect with him. And Valois is one of the last of the Mohicans of the, the really nice, kind, gentle women in town. Dorothy Epcar was another one, you know. We're just, uh, lucky to have had these people with us.
And if I can just take one more minute, I want to thank the community for supporting their library and the patience with our curbside service. We will be meeting with the board next Tuesday to talk about next steps, but I do appreciate the community and the support, and really the love that they've shown the library during this really difficult period. Thank you.
Thank you. And keep up the good work that you do over there, truly, yeah. Well, at this point, let's, uh, call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
All second.
Let's, um, call the roll first.
Starks.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Very good. That carried, and now, Madam Clerk, speed read the items, if you would.
Approved minutes from the December 28, 2020 meeting, and bill list of $1,515,577.53. Proceed of building permit report for November 2020, December 2020, and annual 2020 report. November 2020 financial statements. Approved liquor license renewals for Eastside Liquor and Grocery at 1116 East Nevada Street. Seven Rios Liquor Store at 120 East Main Street. Opa Grill at 4 West Boone Street, and Quick Star at 814 South Sixth Street. Resolution approving contract change order number two for South Third Street Bridge Repair Project, STR 18003, a decrease of $440.05. Resolution approving engineer's statement of completion and accepting the South Third Street Bridge Repair Project, being project number STR 183, excuse, 18003, with a final project cost in the amount of $135,811.85. Resolution authorizing the purchase of property at 406 West Lynn Street. Resolution authorizing an agreement with I.D. Bailey LLP to continue to provide audit services for the city of Marshalltown for fiscal years ending June 30, 2021 through June 30, 2023.
Very good. Thank you. And then, let's go on to item G, resolutions, and tell us what the first one is, please.
Public hearing and resolution approving plan specifications form a contract and costs for the Fourth Street and Meadow Lane Storm Sewer Enhancement Project in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, being project number SMW 17001.
Your Honor, I move for approval.
Thank you.
Public hearing.
I, I think we've, yeah, have, probably have to start with the hearing first, and I can't find my cheat sheet up here, but I found it on my phone.
I'm sorry.
So, no problem. Uh, so I declare the public hearing is open right now, and the time is 5:40, yeah, no, 5:37 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments. Open the microphones and phones.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll give the 10 count this time. So much for public comments. Staff review.
Good evening. Justin Nickel, Public Works Director, um, for the new council member on our board. Yes. Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Uh, a quick review of this project. This is for the installation of storm sewer, starting at Fourth and Ingledo, near Lenahan Middle School, and working our way south to Fourth and Meadow Lane, and then, uh, some arms off of that trunk of storm sewer to the east on Columbus Drive, Crestview Drive, and then making its way east on Meadow Lane. Um, this is our second step in the process, uh, council process, and I would be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
And that is now the time for council comments or questions.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Hey, Justin, remind everybody, this is the second phase or step, and it's a, it's a four-step, isn't it?
Uh, n-
For this project, this area?
This realistically would be the last step, uh, so you're correct. So this is a continuation of storm sewer that terminates down at High Street-
Right.
And what would be Fourth Street if it, if it went through, uh, that then makes its way into the Lynn Creek system. Uh, we did construct storm sewer from Fourth, uh, from High Street in, near what would be Fourth Street to Fourth and Ingledo in 2019. Yes. Continuation of storm sewer, but, uh, there might be little things that are necessary, but there is no, uh, further-
No major-
Million-dollar projects. Yeah. This would be the, the terminus.
So hopefully, this fixes all the flooding problems in the streets over there.
Uh, for a certain storm, um, take, since I got the audience, you know, there's always a storm that will flood every storm sewer system because you can't build it large enough for the largest rain event, but it should take care of the everyday flooding events.
Other questions or comments for staff? If not, I will declare the public hearing is closed now at 5:41 PM, and invite, uh, Ms. Warren to renew her motion.
I would, Your Honor. Sorry about that earlier.
No problem.
Second, Your Honor.
Very good. Any other discussion? If not, let's call a roll.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Starks.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Very good. That carried. Unable, please read the second resolution item.
Public hearing and resolution adopting tentative resolution 202364, providing for the vacation, conveyance, and transfer of street and alley here and described from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to the Marshalltown Community School District.
Very good. I will declare the public hearing is open, uh, right now at, um, 6:42 PM. And did the clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Um, public comments, so let's unmute the mics.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Time for staff review.
Yes, so this, this is part of the larger property exchange that we, um, have proposed with the school district for, um, some area, um, by the Anson Park Ball Field. And so there were kind of, um, there was a, a portion of South Fourth Avenue that extends to the south of the parking lot is there, as well as an alley that's kind of in between some lots that extends there. So, uh, our process for disposing of those is, is a little bit different. We had to take some initial steps, including the vacation of those properties, and then record those so that we actually have, like, separate parcels that we can dispose of. And so, um, Roger has been working with the school district's attorney on a larger agreement that captures everything, um, but these were two first steps that needed to take place before we could take action on a larger agreement.
Thank you. Uh, time for council comments.
So- Your Honor.
Yes.
To, to, I guess, reengage what was probably a discussion over a year ago or so, was there ever a vote that was initiated by council that originally voted down the land swap trade between Bicentennial Park and the softball district, or the softball field at Anson? Was that ever officially voted on and shot down? And I guess the reason I ask that question is I just want to make sure that everybody understands and remembers what this is directly tied to, which is a land swap of something I was verbally against, and I guess I'm just trying to understand where that last stood when it came to council.
Yes, um, so there, there was, I believe, in, uh, February or March of last year, I'd have, I can't think of exact dates, there was a discussion item that was on the council agenda where the council voted not to proceed. And then council member Hoop asked that this be added back on as a discussion item, and that's when it was voted to proceed. Um, I don't have exact dates and things, but I can get those for you.
Okay. So I guess a note to all the other council members, I'd like to, out of curiosity here, if anybody else changed their mind from when we originally talked about this, since this is tied directly to something we all voted no on originally, or I assume the majority of us did. I stand where I stood before.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Um, my position on this is I'm against giving away the softball diamond. Um, this is a park, part of a park that's named after the city's founder, Henry Anson. Um, the Iowa Valley Leadership Group put money into this park to redo the playground equipment. We are in the process, which will probably be later in today's meeting, about the CIP. We're going to redo the, the shelter house. We're putting more money into this park. Um, I just can't see giving away a softball diamond. We've already lost one in this town with French Park. When JBS, uh, expanded, we lost that softball diamond at French Park. And as much as I like to see progress and change, I just can't stand by and watch history be destroyed in this town. There are certain things that have historical value, and I know we all received a letter from one of the softball representatives that they don't want to see it go. Um, you know, it's a, it's used as a practice field. Back in my day, it was a game field because softball was that big. Um, I just cannot knowingly stand by and watch us give away this field for barren land out on, uh, you know, Bicentennial Park. It just doesn't make sense to me. There's other ways to fix some of the issues that are behind the scenes on this, that I think drove this to come back to us as a vote. Um, I'm all for fixing those issues, but not giving away the softball diamond. Is, you know, it's a historical feature of the town. I want it to stay. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other councilors wish to comment? Hearing done. I'll declare the public hearing is concluded at 5:46 PM. Is there a motion to approve the, uh, resolution?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, don't anticipate any further discussion. Let's go ahead and call a roll.
Your Honor, one point of clarification.
You may.
This is, this is strictly for the alleyway, not for the remaining part, so there's no portion of grass being traded as part of this trade, or as part of this, this public hearing, correct?
Uh, what, what you would consider the softball parcel is not part of this public hearing, no.
Yeah.
But, Your Honor?
Yes.
But clarification, the alleyway is in the grass that goes right up to the ball diamond.
Correct. It is a north-south alley that is, um, from the edge of the parking lot to the north side of the ball diamond parcel.
Right. To the fence, basically. It's not, the alley doesn't exist, but the, the land exists. It's part of that open field behind, north of the ball diamond, between the ball diamond and the parking lot.
It is, yes, the, the north parcel line of the ball diamond to the parking lot, yes. Do you, would you like me to bring up a, a map? I think I can-
I, I think it'd be good before we vote to see that it's actually, the street is actually part of the parking lot, and the alley is part of the grass.
The street is not part of the parking lot. The street is actually a, a street.
Okay, between the shelter house and the parking lot.
Yeah.
I worried you'd navigate that quickly.
We, we use it multiple times a day. So you can see South Fourth, the way it's proposed, and what we're talking about with the portion of South Fourth basically terminates at this parking lot line and goes to, uh, what is part of the ball field, um, fence line. Same with the, uh, alley there. It is from the parking lot line down to that. So, uh, if we do not vacate, then we cannot dispose of it. It has to be vacated to be included as part of any sort of agreement. And then that is the, the ball field parcel in whole.
Other questions or comments? Let's call for the roll list now, then.
Isom.
No.
Martin.
Yes.
Starks.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Warren.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
The count is three to three.
Three to three?
Mm-hmm.
That's right. Yeah, I, I should have started the meeting by welcoming Raymond as, as our new, uh, appointed city councilperson, and then should have apologized to, um, uh, Mr., Mr. Gowdy. He's under, under the weather and unable to be here tonight. So, that motion is, uh, has failed. Let's go on to the next ordinance.
Ordinance 15007, ratifying and repealing prior ordinances relating to Marshalltown Urban Revitalization Area Number One, second reading.
Entertain a motion to approve it?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Isom.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Martin. Thank you. Um, anybody wish to discuss?
Yes, um, this is, uh, our second reading of an ordinance, um, that is very similar to the next one. Uh, the way that we had, we, so we did continue on the, um, dates for urban revitalization area number one and two indefinitely, and, uh, this ordinance basically goes back and repeals the prior ordinances where this was done as that was not the proper vehicle for amending the plan. And so this is a cleanup action to make sure that those prior ordinances are fully nullified.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? Should we open the mics again for public comment?
If, I need to, one second here.
It's hard enough to juggle all this stuff when you got it right in front of you, but being spread out like this makes it even more challenging.
Okay, the lines are unmuted.
Unmuted for 10 seconds. All right, that's a short 10 seconds, but, um, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Martin.
Yes.
Starks.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Warren.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good. Well, that one did carry. Unable, read the next one.
Ordinance 15008, ratifying and repealing prior ordinances relating to Marshalltown Urban Revitalization Area Number Two, second reading.
Any motions?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? It's kind of the same song, second verse, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I don't think we need to unmute the mics this time, honestly. I can't imagine anybody getting charged up about this one. So, let's, um, take a vote.
Starks.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Warren.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Unable, read the third and last ordinance for us.
Ordinance 15009, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, by setting out scheduled fine amounts for speeding in violation of Chapter 76, Schedule 8. First reading.
Any mo- motion to approve it?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Very good. Any discussion?
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. So, in 2019, as you all know, we recodified our, uh, city ordinances, and speeding came over from the old ordinance book to the new ordinance book, but what didn't come over is a clarification of, uh, fines schedule and, and how, how we're going to assess fines, I guess. So, the clerk of court, uh, for Marshall County, had asked us to address this issue so that we can clearly enforce speeding under city code. And so what we've done is, uh, adopted the state schedule of fines for speeding. So our officers know, are familiar with that schedule. It's what the state uses for fines, and, uh, that's what we're recommending for this ordinance, so that we can start using the city ordinance again for enforcement of speeding violations.
Very good. Any questions for the chief?
Just out of curiosity, did the old ordinance differ from what the state, uh, was?
Uh, it, it must have. I, I, I really, to be honest with you, sir, I'm not sure what happened here, but, uh, we needed to fix it, and so this is the solution. Staff worked with, uh, the city attorney to come up with this solution. The clerk of court is happy with it, and, uh, our recommendation would be to pass the first reading, and then we would also request that you consider waiving the second and third readings.
Why don't I go ahead and open the mics on this one, because there may be some speeders out there that want to weigh in?
Roger.
I've been really lucky the last 10 years, including 92 and a 65 in Oklahoma last year. Warning. Okay, that's our 10 seconds. Let's, uh, before we vote, if anybody does want to suggest or move that we waive the other readings, entertain that as well.
Point of clarification, then so I amend my motion to, uh, include the waiving of the second and third reading.
Great. Will the second do the same?
Yes.
Okay. Let's vote on that one.
Thompson.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Starks.
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. We're on to, uh, discussion items, then, and the first one is to discuss the draft of the strategic plan.
Point of order, Your Honor?
Yes. Did I miss one?
Do we have to vote twice on that? Just once on the amendment, and then the second time on the amended ordinance?
The way I heard it was the, uh, the motion was amended to both pass it and to waive the readings.
Okay. Since Gabe made the-
And I assumed your second did the same thing.
Yeah. Just want to make sure that we're not, no snag there.
I, I'm not concerned about it.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the way I understood it.
Well, if Roger's happy, we're all happy.
He's got the last second.
Thanks.
You bet. Okay. Now, let's talk about the strategic plan.
Yes, I'm not going to go into the same kind of in-depth, uh, discussion that we did last time, um, but, uh, I did want to kind of bring up the, the main goals and objectives to just see if there's any questions or anything that anybody has, um, and, uh, to just see if there's any changes before, um, requesting that we would bring this forward for approval on the January 25 meeting.
No comments, I think, just, uh, level of appreciation, at least for myself, and I'm assuming some of the council members, and obviously the work that goes into this and getting it complete into the state of which, uh, we can review every year or so. I think otherwise, no questions or comments outside of that.
Good point, really. And for those of us that have been hanging out here for 10 years or more, we remember when we didn't really have this kind of organization.
Yeah, one, one thing I would like to point out that, um, will likely change, it's still something I'm going to get to, as I've kind of said before, we've, we've never really done any of the data collection and needed, kind of in these blue areas of, of these kind of, uh, indicators for success, is what I've been calling those. Um, we actually do have some things, uh, now from the community survey, which I think will help be indicators, and so I need to go back through and pull out some of that data, like, there were some things here, you know, we're about satisfaction ratings for city services and things that, uh, we do have. So, the idea will be that now that we do have some data that we can use, I'll, I'll pull it in there, um, but I can tell you, just like on the, um, the goal here related to, uh, housing, I have been working with the chamber. Uh, we, we've discussed that, um, rather than having two organizations tracking data, that it makes sense that we, uh, track the data for the chamber's goal and report on that kind of as a, a community goal related to housing, which their goal, um, is to have a thousand new residential units by 2024. Uh, new residential units meaning apartments, as well as single-family attached or detached housing as well. So, um, so that was, that's where they're at, so for consistency's sake and how we're all talking as a community, um, we're trying to align where it makes sense to align.
Very good. One thing that did stand out in the survey is that people appreciate our good fire department and police department.
And our roads.
Yeah, that's true, too. Very good. Well, um, any other discussion about it?
Your, Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
So Jessica, do you feel comfortable that you and your staff can come back to us with a final draft?
Yeah, I'm-
You said there's still some things here you need to tweak.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, this is all to tweak, and like I said, I've really wanted to see where we've had some baseline data and things as well. And so, there will be just some minor tweaks in these blue sections, but ultimately, the idea is to get these data, to get this data in a format where it's really more of like a scorecard to report out on. So, that's kind of what I'm working towards. I think the scorecard might be a little bit longer in development on some of these. I started looking at our dangerous and dilapidated properties and realized that's going to be more of a hassle to go back and track and figure out a few things related to dates and things, but we can definitely start getting some of this data together.
So you'll be ready to come to us in two weeks, then?
I have no idea. So, budget is the priority right now. But ultimately, what I'm more concerned about are the goals and objectives, not necessarily the measurements. And so, that's really where, that's what I'd like to move forward. One of the things that I think we, you know, there's certainly, tonight you took an action to, one of the things we had in there was partnering with the school district on the land swap. If that's off the table, then that's certainly something that can be removed from the implementation plan. I think that was in Goal Four. And so, yeah. So, I mean, there's definitely things that can be updated, you know, as we go along in doing quarterly updates, or there are things that can be removed right away. It's really up to you, and when do you want to come, have this come forward for approval, I guess?
I just, I guess I just don't want you to rush it if, you know, because you're going to, you guys are so busy with the budgeting stuff.
Yeah. It's, so I'm comfortable with the work plan that we have here. A lot of the stuff, you know, like the design standards, things like that, they're already underway. There's other things, of course, that aren't underway that would need to be initiated. But intentionally, typically, just knowing what our schedule is, most of the completion deadlines that we sort of set for ourselves are pretty light on that first quarter, knowing that we've got budget and everything else underway as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? If not, let's go on to the next discussion item, which is the CIP and capital expenditures and purchases first draft.
Okay, this officially kicks off the budget process. So, I would say one of the unfortunate things is that we didn't have the data that we needed to really move forward with what I had hoped would be better discussion on two funds, being Fund 030 and then Fund 353, which is where we put things. But I did kind of want to go through just generally, sort of, this report, and kind of just, you know, feel free to ask questions along the way. I don't want to belabor any point or anything. I can share Diana did give me figures today, and it does appear that our number is very, here is very, very close for revenue, but needs to be reduced slightly. So, that might impact things. One of the things to know about Fund 030 is we do have a fund balance requirement, meaning that we keep 15% of basically this line right here set aside and reserved each year to make sure that we have a balance. Why we do that and where things like that come in handy, when you have a tornado mid-year or at the beginning of your fiscal year, and you have to replace different vehicles and things, or when you have a derecho that damages some things in Parks and Rec where it might not be something that comes out of their regular budget, it could fit in here. So, we do try and maintain that balance so that we do have some flexibility to address capital needs during the years they come. So, this fund basically is our voter-approved tax levy for capital projects, which you'll see next week on the tax levy worksheet. And then we'll have this updated next week as well to reflect some changes that we've made, as well as the final revenue numbers that we have. So, this is really where we kind of put all that kind of standard stuff that then doesn't end up in general fund budgets for departments. And so, I can point out, the 2010 Chevy Tahoe was replaced, it was destroyed in the derecho in the fire department, and so we used our insurance proceeds to cover a portion of it, but ultimately, it didn't fully replace the vehicle value. So, we were able to offset with these funds. We use this to replace office furniture, things like that. I will say that I did have council tables that were budgeted here, but in this budget, but ultimately, they came in below $4,000. $5,000 is that threshold for when is something really a capital project. One other big thing that has been added to this fiscal year, which is nice that we have some flexibility on things, is this line item I'll highlight called intergov updates. This is something that Michelle is currently working on to help provide some additional flexibility in user-friendliness to our intergov system, which runs our nuisance system, as well as like our building plans permitting type of system as well. So, it does have an expensive cost. You'll be hearing more about this in the future, as this would be an expense that you would ultimately need to approve. The big thing that I'll point out that is in fiscal year '22, the fiscal year that we're budgeting for, that is for the library, is $115,000 from this fund to a $175,000 overall project for a mobile services outreach unit. One of the things that you'll notice kind of with the library in particular is we've kicked the talk of an addition out to the farthest fiscal year, so fiscal year '25. So, it's still there, but we're not actively talking about it, and the library is looking at different ways that they can still provide services to the community in a more efficient way, given our current environment. Parks and Rec, we typically have one big project in there per year. This current year, we've got the Pickleball Pocket Park, which is still under, underway, in design right now. Next year would be the Elks Park improvements. Elks Park was one of the priority parks that was in the Parks and Rec master plan. And then, you can see for the next, the next year, Peterson Park. And then I think we get more into some big equipment replacement, and then BPW Park for fiscal year 2025. And then finally, we have the police department, which has just sort of your general replacement of things, you know, as they kind of come and go. So, all of these numbers right down here for our ending balances comply with our 15% fund balance policy. Any questions on this fund? We will talk about this. There are some changes that have been made just on a few items between Thursday, when we released the agenda, and today. So, we'll talk more about it next time as well. Another fund, again, I won't spend too much time on it, but it does have some important things. Fund 031 is our building maintenance fund. In the past, this has been funded with transfers from 030 for building-specific projects. But as you can see right here, we have $80,000 from the fixed asset sale proceeds, which was $80,000 from the sale of the fire station. So, we are keeping our funding going, and we are really hoping that that first-floor remodel for finance happens this year. It's been out there for a few years now, and we'd really like the finance department to be able to move downstairs in City Hall. We do have some other projects that are proposed for buildings, and we really try and keep these as flexible as possible. We also, one thing I'll point out is, we do have a generator for the Coliseum, for which we do have a grant application going into FEMA for, as well as then a non-grant application project for a generator at the library as well. So, doing some of those resiliency, disaster resiliency things in fiscal year '22. This one, you removed the fund balance policy requirement a few years ago, because it was really hampering us in what we could plan to try and maintain any sort of projects moving forward without ongoing funding. Any questions on this fund? And then I'll spend a little bit of time on this one, too. So, to purchase the two fire trucks, the council did approve a bond, but then they, we had also been setting aside about $107,000, $108,000 a year for three or four years to help build up some fund balance in order to be able to offset a little bit of the borrowing on the purchase of those vehicles. So, we've got the purchase made, and we are looking for some trade-in value here in the next fiscal year after the new vehicles are received. Moving on then, road use tax is the other really big one, which has a few projects that, you know, we have discussed. This has $400,000 in it for, to go along with the bond proceeds for the railroad crossing safety improvements. This $400,000 really addresses redoing portions of street, sidewalk, and curb area, and not anything that is in Union Pacific right away. As we go down a little bit further, we have some funds coming towards the Pocket Park as well, since that is technically alley, and that is alley surfacing that we'll be replacing. We believe that we finally will see our payments to, repayments to the Iowa DOT start in fiscal year '22 for the improvements along South Center Street. We'll talk a little bit more about this in Fund 353, but the council has approved an agreement with Stanley Consultants for a study on the South Center Street Viaduct, and then we've included $300,000 to pay for the development of plans and specifications to get a project out to bid. But you'll notice there's no project in here, and we'll talk about that here in the future. We also paid for a portion of our Mill and Overlake of streets with tornadoes out of this, as well as then our downtown streetlight replacements being paid out of this fund, too. This also covers equipment replacement for the Public Works Department, Street Department as well, and so it covers quite a few things. As we move on to local option sales taxes, just covers our project portion for the Edgewood Extension Project. And then we start to get into some of these more obscure funds that are just accounting for some grant dollars coming in, whether it be for the police department, where we know that it'll be spent on something capital, or into the fire department, where they have moved some of their specific capital projects out of Fund 030 into this fund, since they did have a very generous donation from an estate here this year of $150,000. And then the library gift fund is also here, too, and that's where their donations come in and out of, and so there's some activity here. Then we kind of get into, oh, that's another police fund. And then we get into our major capital funds into the 300 series and start to account for things like the Edgewood Extension Project and its own fund. The airport has its own fund, so the bond proceeds are already there, and there's different other funding sources and project expenses that will be coming out of this fund in the next few years. 353 is the fund that I do want to spend just a little bit of time talking about. Last year was the first year that we sort of decided, like, how do we talk to you about those future borrowing needs in a way that kind of keeps those in line with other projects that we have going on? And so, what I don't want you to focus on is this up here quite yet, but to look at sort of what we have laid out for projects. You'll notice the current fiscal year is all zeros, because you had borrowed that money. Those projects are now in their own separate funds. But we do have some projects that are proposed for the next year. I don't want to go into those too in-depth, because I'll show another worksheet here that will still need to be updated. But ultimately, we'll still be talking about these things. One of the strategies that I would like to employ in this process of the budget is to really not make any final decisions on this list. We'll still have to talk about debt capacity and what that looks like. But then also, the South Center Street Viaduct, we have a million-dollar placeholder in here, but what's going to come back to you in the springtime will be a list of options for, you could do X, and it's going to cost you this, or you could do X and Y, and it'll cost this, so that you have the ability to make the decisions about what exactly you would like to do to the South Center Street Viaduct. The same is going to be true with the downtown implementation plan. We won't have anything back on that until June. That will present some phases to us. And so, we really don't want you to say, yes, this is what we're going to borrow for, or consider borrowing for in the budget, because there's still two very big things that are going to come post-budget that we feel like you need to consider. We've already been fairly tight against that 60% threshold, and so if that is still the goal, to stay at that 60% of our legal debt capacity, then there's going to be some things that you'll want to consider in that. But I can tell you, there's some other things that we'll have some conversations that come back to you. Justin and his team have been hard at work on the street improvement program, and I believe it's a conservative figure of $3 million a year needed to move forward with getting our street rating up, pavement index condition rating up. So, this is here to really sort of hold all those future projects, where we see that bond proceeds would be one of the major or only funding sources for that. But again, we know we've got some things that are big unknowns on here. Kind of related to that, I will just show, this is not updated yet. We didn't have valuation figures, so we really didn't have a calculation to show how much capacity was there. But I did go ahead and update those bonding needs from that sheet into this. So, for our next meeting, we will have this completed and bring back to you, and be able to show you kind of a picture of what things look like with where we're at. Going back here, we have our D and D program. The bond proceeds that you allocated here have been a, basically a lifeline to keep this going here. I do believe that this current fiscal year will have $175,000 in expenses by getting a few phases out. It might be a little bit less than that, just because of when payments might cross fiscal years and stuff, but ultimately, we think that $120,000 is a reasonable amount of demolition to be taking on each year, assuming that we can get about 10 houses down per year. This is, then starts to account for general obligation bonds for, from past years. This actually was the, I think this was the 2020A general obligation bond. Oh, no, that was the 2019 general obligation bond. 362 is the 2020A, and so these projects are underway. These numbers won't start to change, and still we have actual costs. And then this is 2018 general obligation bond dollars. One thing to note on this, we do anticipate, Diana in her department did a wonderful job of investing these proceeds in ways that earned us quite a bit of interest. And so, we anticipate that we will have some additional funds here that when the parking lot renovation is wrapped up, and the 12th Avenue sidewalk installation is wrapped up, there could be some additional funds to allocate elsewhere. Coliseum, again, we're on the road there, but we've got some additional things happening there in terms of revenue, as well as then, this is just an expense number that's set to zero things out. In talking with Jeff, it does appear that we are going to be very close on things, but we do believe that we will be slightly under budget, if not at budget. And then we get into our utility funds. The water, wastewater treatment plant, I'm not going to go into the multiple pages that Bob Ranson and his staff put together, but they have a complete listing of everything that needs to be done at that plant and are very much on top of it. One project that I did want to point out, if I can find it real quick, there is proposed for fiscal year '23, an $8 million, there it is, an $8 million project to replace Headworks Equipment. Headworks is basically where everything comes in, and so it's a very important piece of our puzzle. That is proposed to be bonded, but would be repaid with the wastewater funds. As we get into some of these other ones, this Fund 616 is where we account for some other projects as well, meaning our manhole rehabilitation, this project for 3.5 million for port-in-place manhole type of project, I believe?
Sewer lines.
Oh, sewer lines. That is still out there for fiscal year '23. Again, would need to be bonded for, but would be repaid with your wastewater funds. We also have Transit, who has very few needs here in the immediate, and just has some projects out there in fiscal year '25. And then Stormwater, where here's our proceeds of long-term debt for that project that you just approved to move forward tonight with the public hearing. And that is kind of the biggest thing here on the radar that will happen this year. So, that is, that is this big summary. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but please know that this will be coming back to you in a second draft. And I don't think Diana and I really have any preference at this point if you approve it next week, given that we couldn't have all the information for you this week. So, please feel free to ask any questions of Diana, myself, any department heads that are here to answer questions about their projects as well.
Any comments or questions by the council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I may?
You may.
Jessica, what was the holdup on evaluations? Is that the county?
That's the county. They were having some things that didn't balance.
Nothing internal for us?
Nope. We were ready, we were ready to go into December, so.
So, basically, which department head do we make mad, right?
We, so, well, I'll give you, I'll give you an example, you know, Fund 030, to get it to the point of presenting to you, we had to go back and cut some things out, and, you know, every Tuesday, we have a department head team meeting, and, you know, it was a simple conversation last week of, okay, we need to reduce out $75,000. And quite frankly, I had volunteers. Chief Tupper volunteered me before, or volunteered before we even had the meeting with some areas that could be reduced out. And so, I think, what I hope you all realize is that there is a great team, that it's not just Diana, that- that there is a great team that's working together on this budget process from beginning to end to make sure that we're resolving our own differences and talking about what we can and can't do and we don't need to hopefully come here and say, please split the baby for us.
And then, if I may, Your Honor, follow up. What's the projection for our discretionary fund? The, you know, what's coming into us that we can help out other projects with the council-designated stuff?
I don't know that we have that. I think that will be talked about in early February, I think.
I thought it was March, wasn't it?
February.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're not there yet.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So I guess just a question. I don't know if it's ever been done. So everything that's getting cut to help mitigate some of the expenses, does that ever share with regards to what that is? And I guess maybe to Gary's point of, maybe some of that stuff just really isn't a priority, but I just, maybe it is and, but it's the easiest thing to cut off the top. I'm just kind of curious as to when some of the departments are making some of those decisions. To Gary's point, if there are some of those make sense to bring up for discussion, to weigh an option? Does it make sense just to have a list that gets distributed to say, hey, here's what we cut in order to make things balance? Or not? I don't know.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. You know, it's, like I said, it's, I prefer it. I'm pretty sure Diana prefers it when departments can look at their own listing and say, here's what I think I can give up. Off the top of my head, I think it was $20,000 in vehicle purchases next year, you know, that we'd built in some inflationary increases for the Police Department. And so we were able to reduce that. I think we reduced off of the library's mobile services. And then, yeah, Jeff moved some things out to future years. Alicia did that, too. So it's a shuffling, but that's definitely something we can report to you so you know kind of what's happening behind the scenes to get you a first draft.
Whether it's worth a conversation or if nothing else, a review, just to, so I think we're aware of some of the sacrifices or movements or decisions made maybe behind the scenes. I don't know if that's worth sharing or not. I just want to pose a question because I don't think we've done that before, so.
Yeah, we can definitely start to compile that just so you kind of know. I think there's probably times where we make it seem like it's probably too easy and it's not always that way.
That's why I asked the question.
Your Honor, if I may follow up.
You may.
So get us, get our mindset set before we move forward. Everything you have for 2021, 2022, are there still, are we going to have to make some decisions on those items? Or do you think the valuations are going to come in to support all that stuff? I mean, and then give me a ballpark. Are we looking at borrowing, you know, a total of $5 million again this year? $6 million? Just give me a ballpark of where you think, what we have to cut, where we have to be, what do you think we're borrowing?
Well, I think that it's, you know, the borrowing question is really going to be up to you. I think probably this number up here that's blank is going to be the driver and I don't have that right now.
Don't you have a feel for that?
But I can, I can, I have a feeling it is not 5.6 million. I have a feeling it is less than 5.6 million. And again, I put in, you know, a million-dollar placeholder right there. But as you and I had talked, our consultant had said, you know, one, basically a full rehab of one block in downtown is likely $800,000. So I think that says that downtown implementation plan is moving forward. That's where we'll have conversations about what does Phase 1 look like from a, you know, a perspective that makes sense with what we have. Fiscal year '23 is just that weird, unknown year. We are still planning to pursue the Build Grant for Highway 14. And so if we were to get that, that 3.9 million just goes away. And so that makes things a lot easier. So that project's going to continue to be a pinch point until we really know where we're at and what we're going to do with it. But I can, I feel fairly confident in saying that the capacity that remains is going to be less than the 5.625 million there.
The point I was trying to make is, we're what? We're carrying 52 million in bond debt? Is that right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, when do we start breaking the, when do we go on a diet, you know, to start breaking the cycle of borrowing 6 million a year?
So I think one of the things-
And I realize we have to do things, but we've got some tough tasks ahead of us in the next, what, two months?
Yeah. And so that's where I think the conversation about borrowing is one that isn't resolved in the budget process just because you'll have, if you want to make sure that you can do a project on South Center Street that is at least $1 million, then there's probably capacity you need to reserve. If you want to do anything in downtown that's, you know, $1 million or whatever, there's capacity that you need to reserve. And so that's where I really feel like any conversation about borrowing is going to extend beyond March 31st, when you have better data to make the decisions that we want you to move forward with.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Sure. Any other questions or comments? How hard will it be to unmute the mics for the public comment?
Not very difficult. So the line's unmuted.
Go ahead and mute them again.
Okay. And as I said, we'll have a second draft at the next meeting. And if there is a reason to come back with a third draft before making sure we're comfortable with a, setting a public hearing, we'll certainly do that as well.
Good information, good presentation. Thank you. Okay, on to the third discussion item, which is the general fund budgets for the mayor and city council.
Good evening. Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So for every department, we put together this form for them to review their budgets. So the first column is always the last fiscal year activity, which ended June 30th of '20. Okay. And then the next column is what you adopted last March for the FY '21 budget. This column is what we've spent year-to-date, either in revenues or expenses. And then this next column is what we're planning for our budget amendment, which we do alongside our regular FY '22 budget. We go back and reestimate our FY '21 budget. And then the next column is our FY '22 request. So again, Jessica and I sit down with every department head and we go through all their information. Since this is the mayor and the council's budget, we thought we would bring it to you so you could look it over. So we'll start with the mayor budget. So there was a salary increase implemented of January of 2022, which takes the mayor from $7,500 to $11,000 annual. So since that's only six months increase, that's why it's $9,250 for this year. So in fiscal year '23, it'd be $11,000. So this is the gross wage. And then you have all the benefits coming down here. We have some money for dues and subscriptions. And then we just go through telephone and insurance, normal daily activities. And then conference expenses. The mayor hasn't been attending anything lately, but we put a $1,500 in there in case we needed it. And then some operating supplies. So that's basically it for the mayor's budget. Any question on that one? Okay, I'll go on to the council. Again, January 1st of 2022, the increase will be from $3,000 to $5,500 annual. So again, that's pro-rated for seven council members. And then we have taxes. We put some money in here for strategic planning. This year, we spent $1,150, so we just bumped it up a little. We have insurance. And then virtual meeting fees. We debated whether to lower that, not knowing what COVID would be, but we decided just to leave it for now. There's some money for conference expenses that we put in. There hasn't been a lot of need, but as there's turnover of new council members, we may want to have them go to some sessions.
The Iowa League of Cities is really worthwhile.
Yes. And then a few operating supplies. And then here's that $4,000 for the tables for the council chambers that Jessica talked about in the CIP, that we moved out of CIP and put in the budget. So that's it for the mayor and council's budget. Are there any questions? So next week, when we bring the general fund, we talk about the other, all the other functions in the general fund, this will be the same format that you'll see. So unless you have any changes, we will move forward with this budget at this time for the mayor and council.
Any comments or questions, discussion?
I have a question for Joel. How many, how many magazines do you subscribe to?
Actually, I was wondering.
How many magazines are you getting right now?
Just the expensive ones.
I can't think of a one. I really can't.
Probably the dues. That's dues.
Oh, that is, but the one is 30 bucks a year, the other is 100 and-
The other is a different one.
Yeah, maybe like 150 for the Mid-Iowa Mayor's Group.
Just asking, Joel, just asking.
I don't have time to read all those things.
Did you have a question?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Well, that takes us to the public comment point. So I need to read another caveat. And that is, members of the public may make comments